Okay, it's five o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody. Welcome our students. Welcome our guests. We appreciate everybody being here. Makes it a lot easier on us if we've got a, we've got a crowd to cheer us on. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order on April 25th, 2023, and ask the city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Guest?
Present.
Commissioner Henderson?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Bray?
Here.
I'll ask Commissioner Guest to say the invocation, and we'll remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, we, thank you for the day you've given us. And thank you for our city, and thank you for our country. Just let all of our decisions be made tonight. Give us wisdom, discernment. Let us show love, kindness. And we love you in all things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, none this evening.
Okay. Great. Our first guests, the first presentation that we have tonight is from the Student Equity Advisory Council from Paducah Tillman High School. I had the good fortune of being invited to a couple of their meetings, and really enjoyed it. It's really a great group of bright, young students, very invested in our community. And so I was so impressed that invited all of you to come here and make a presentation, so the community could learn more about what you're doing. So with that, I'll introduce, who's going to take it from here?
I'm the president.
Okay. So whoever's in charge.
Hi, guys. I would just like to thank you for allowing us to be able to present to you guys. We're the Student Equity and Advisory Council, and we're going to start off with some introductions. So I'm the vice president. My name is Aniza Ali. I'm also president of the Beta and involved in Paducah Tillman High School varsity soccer team.
I'm Alexandra Baeza. I'm a senior. I also play soccer and run track. I'll be attending the University of Louisville in the fall, and I am a 2022 Governor Scholar.
Hello, my name is Lenation Hunt Hall. I'm also a senior. I'm also, this year, is an MLK Award winner, and I will be attending the UK in the fall.
Hi, my name is Justice Campbell. I'm a senior. I am the president of our African-American Leadership Club. I am the woodwind captain of our Band of Blue, and I will be attending the University of Kentucky in the fall.
My name's Jack Butts. I'm a senior and a founding member of the Student Equity Advisory Council. I'll be attending Center College in the fall, part of the Golf Scholarship and the New Horizons Scholarship. I'm also part of National Golf Society.
I'm Corbin Williams. I am a junior and founding member of the Student Equity and Advisory Council, and I run cross-country and track, and I'm also a 2023 Governor Scholar.
Okay, well, all introductions are done. We'll get moving on. So what is the Student Equity Advisory Council? So kind of our foundation of what we're about is our mission statement. So I'll ask everyone to join in with me.
Advocating the student voice by fostering inclusivity for all demographics.
The main focus of the Student Equity Advisory Council is to focus more on student voice, which is a big thing that we might have problems in our school system. A lot of the times, decisions are made for us, but not by us. And we are a total of 15 members.
So the application process has changed actually a lot from the year I joined. It is now consisting of a letter application, a teacher evaluation form, and one of the more interesting things is you have to do a two-minute recording video of yourself just to give Ms. Burris and the reviewers an idea of who you are, as well as kind of why you joined SEEK or why you want to join SEEK. This is one of those really interesting things, because it's, it showed how much we've changed and evolved from our first time, and how much we want to get out of our student voice. We also had a summer retreat this year where we traveled to St. Louis, and the whole goal of this was just to practice the skills that like we will need. So we did, we did speech training. We did how to, we did like, how to, how to present, and just a ton of different things that encourage students from AALC, BCRS, and SEEK just to learn how to train for the summer. And we plan to do this one again this summer, as far as I know.
At the beginning of this year, we presented to our Board of Education at one of their meetings. It was like a public debut for us. We were introducing ourselves to the school district and presented our goals for the year. And one of the things we did while we were there, some of us presented our essays that we wrote in our application. And the prompt for that was, what does diversity, equity, and inclusion mean to us?
Another big thing that we like to focus on is community service. And without community service, it's kind of like, what of outreach do we have? And some of the things that we have done is the Equity Institute. We've done Once in a Blue Moon, which is a charity. We've done United Way, and all other sorts of things to help us get more in touch with the community.
Another big thing we like to do is collaborate with other schools. I think it's really important to let the surrounding schools that we can be rivals, but also we are all students, and we all struggle with the same issue sometimes. And just kind of learning from each other is really important. And just developing that sense of community amongst the other schools in our region is very important to us. We also have presented and collaborated with the Kentucky Association, Association, Association of School Administrators, the Kentucky Association of School Board Members, and the Kentucky Department of Education. So these are our leaders of the decisions that are being made in our schools, in our schools across the state. And so we are kind of just setting the example for how to kind of make other groups like us in other schools across the state.
So you guys are probably asking yourselves, how are we able to get student voice? How are we able to get teacher voice, parent voice? So we do this by hosting forums. It's kind of a collaborative tool that we use to gather voice, and it's kind of like a meeting, kind of what we're doing right now. And where we have a overall topic, it's usually general, talking about possible parent-student relationships, teacher-student relationships. And then we break out into breakout sessions, where we discuss in more small group setting. Sometimes people feel uncomfortable talking in a big group setting, so we do this to kind of make them feel a little bit more comfortable. But those breakout topics can range from a numerous amount of things that dive deeper into the overall subject.
At the beginning of every forum, we start with something called an icebreaker. It's usually a little activity used to ease the tension in the room, make everyone more comfortable, so everyone feels a little better. As you can see, get comfortable with the uncomfortable. Some of these activities we've done is the Equity Walk, as well as an activity called If You Really Knew Me. And as she said, we do break out into breakout groups. It's usually three to five, depending on how many people are at our meeting. And each group gets a topic revolving around diversity, equity, and inclusion. After the breakout sections, we'll get back together into a bigger group, and we'll talk about these topics that were discussed in the group.
So like Aniza touched on before, we do forums, and our student forum was the first forum we had this year. And we, there was a survey that all Paducah Tillman High School students took from equal opportunity schools. And we took questions based off of that survey of how students really felt in the classroom and their relationship with the teacher. And we focused those questions around diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, and making sure that those students really knew that their voice was heard, because like ours said, it's for the students and by the students. And so by doing this, we were able to reach out to teachers, which is our next forum. And at the teacher forum, we were able to discuss how teachers can improve that student-teacher relationship, because it is very important to all of us, and to make sure that those students' voices are heard, whether they belong in AP classroom, activities outside of school, or activities in school. And so by talking about diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, that ensures that all students' voices are heard, and that they're understood by teachers.
So our most recent forum was our parent forum, which is where we did the same idea with topics centered around DEIB using that EOS survey, but we related it back to the parents. We asked them, how, how can you best support your child in schools? How do you, how do you take what they're learning in school and use your abilities as a parent to support it? Because a lot of this encouragement comes from the parents, and it comes from them just checking on your child and working with your child with their homework and all that. And it's really important to us that we connect with all levels of, of just people in school. And it's, and this was one of the more important ones to me. And I got to see all that through the small groups, and I had meaningful conversations with the parents about, one of the big things for me was, I actually got to humanize my own parent, because sometimes it can seem as if their only job is to nag me about missing assignments. But it really, it really, it really brought it on another level for me, because I was able to see how, how I could connect to my parent, and like, they're really just trying to help. And our forum that's actually coming up that we have not had is the Community Forum. And this one is open to everybody who is in and around McCracken County. This will come on May 11th. If anyone wants to attend, this one is open to the public. This is going to introduce the community, like, to what SEEK is, and like, our future goals. And it's going to address the problems that like we see in our schools. So equity, inclusion, belonging, the entire focus of DEIB will be touched on in those forums.
So we just thank you all for coming, or being here and listening to us speak. We really appreciate it, and I, we all hope that you come out of this with kind of a new thought about our schools and going forward with diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging. And, sorry, I kind of lost my words at the end.
That's fine.
Thank you for allowing us just to come and show you what we do, and we hope you take a lot from it, and you learn something, and it helps you in our community. And you can always reach out, ask us questions, and we'd love to get, like, to collaborate with you guys on whatever you all have going on. And we hope to see you at our Community Forum, too.
Yes.
And we would also like to take questions for anyone who has any.
Great job.
What time is the Community Forum? What time and where is the Community Forum?
It'll be 5:30 at Paducah, at Seaman's Church Institute, 5:30 to 7:00.
May 11.
Send us, send us all, you know, an invite or something.
Yeah, that'd be great.
It'd be awesome. So, so, not so fast, don't. So tell us about what are some of your, what's one of your biggest hurdles? What have you encountered, you know, at school, you know, that, that's been harder than you thought it would be? Any surprises, that sort of thing?
Just getting people involved, because some people are scared to say anything, or just do anything about anything at all. So when they see us doing stuff, it kind of encourages them to do more, to want to get involved.
I would like to answer that question as well. I kind of want to piggyback off what she said, but like, again, like, it was that thing of, when I first started, we did not have that community involvement that I wanted. And it was, it was hard. Students would say, so what does SEEK do? And I would, and I would give them that basic, like, description of, oh, we're promoting student equity, like, we're helping through this. But then, like, once we had our first student forum, it was really that thing of, you saw the students be like, oh, it changed. So it's, it's definitely changed over the time. But at first, our biggest issue was just getting people to ask about what we were and being interested. But after that first forum, it quickly fell apart. And I think we actually are, have like several new people looking to join this year.
Yeah, I think, speaking for myself and for a lot of adults, I think conversations about race, diversity, equity, inclusion, all those things are hard. I mean, you know, a lot of people really haven't delved into it, as Commissioner Henderson and I have discussed, you know, it's, but the fact that you guys are doing that at such an early point in your life, and setting an example for others is, you're a real tribute to the community. It's awesome work that you're doing. So.
Great job, guys.
And any other questions? Are we good?
I, I would like to ask just one question. You did the survey of your peers and the students. Was there anything that came out of that that really struck you as odd or unusual, or that you learned from, that you weren't expecting to learn?
Yeah, so one thing that I noticed from the survey is that one question was, do you have a teacher or just a peer that you can really reach out to? And a lot of the students said no. And so that was really tough to see from the survey, because all these, there's 825 kids in the high school. So seeing that a lot of the kids saying no, that they don't have that teacher, was really, really hard to see, because they need that teacher and that influence in their life to help better themselves. And so once we had the teacher forum, we discussed ways of how the teacher can build a better relationship with that student, and not just be a teacher, but also a peer and advisor to them. So that was really big for us.
Another thing for me that really popped out on the EOS survey was, there was actually a portion where we had asked the teachers how they felt. And one of the questions was that the teachers, do they worry about making race, gender, or just any missteps in school in their students? Because I've always wondered, like, why we don't see more conversations in school, is where it feels like it should be, about race, gender, ethnicity, all of this stuff. And only a few percent actually said that they worry about that. And that surprised me when I first saw it, because for me, I was, I think of like, you never saw it, so you just figured teachers were scared to talk about it, they were scared to lose their jobs. But then when I went and talked to them, we actually saw something a lot different, because we had a PLC recently, I think maybe two weeks ago, where we talked to the ninth grade teachers about, do they? And they said, a lot of them actually do worry about making those missteps. And I thought that was one of those things that was actually really interesting.
So the survey said they weren't, they weren't worried about it, but you found out something different, kind of? Yeah. People sometimes answer the survey questions like they think they should answer them, the survey questions. So, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was a great presentation. Keep up the good work.
Good job.
Thank you, Shonda.
Thank you, Ms. Burris.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, I've got some proclamations here. I know that surprises a lot of people, because this is becoming a kind of a regular, a regular thing. So I have three proclamations, the first of which is concerning Mental Health Awareness Month. Do we have some folks here?
We do.
Okay. Hey, how are you?
Blending in.
Thank you. Yeah, you are blending in, actually.
It was on purpose.
Yeah, sure.
Planned. Oh, no. Oh, yeah.
Well, first of all, thanks for being here. I appreciate it very much. And speaking of mental, mental health, you know, I have to give a call out to Commissioner Henderson. This is something he's been very passionate about the last couple of years, and we actually made mental health and mental health awareness part of some of our priorities for this year. So this really fits right in the priorities of the commission. So the proclamation that I'll read says, whereas look around, look within, is the theme of the 2023's Mental Health Month, and whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools, and businesses, and whereas millions of adults and children are disabled by mental illness every year, but only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness seek treatment, and whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help, and whereas the Board of Commissioners wants to increase the public's awareness to create, to create a community that promotes mental wellness and supports prevention efforts, and whereas the greater Paducah area is fortunate to have several mental health service providers that can assist in the recovery of individuals with mental illnesses, so that they can lead full and productive lives. Now therefore, I, George P. Bray, Mayor of the City of Paducah, proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month. How do you want to do this? Up here?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's go up here. We're going to do a photo op. This is great.
Hi, Katie.
You want to be the beneficiary? You want to do the?
One, two, three.
Okay. All right, who's, who gets this?
All.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Where? You want, you want, you're sitting up there, and then I'm going to, okay, I'll see what you're doing.
I didn't recognize you at first. I did remember your name, because I think I had slaughtered it at the other program. Spurt it out, yeah. Yes, you need to get in it, too.
Is everybody in, in it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you all. Good to see you.
See you guys.
Are you staying? You don't have to.
Okay, I got another proclamation. Is there someone here to receive Arbor Day?
Yes.
Oh, there's John. It kind of falls on you.
I don't know about Paul.
How you doing?
Good seeing you.
Okay, this is a proclamation for Arbor Day, which is something that is very important to the city and addresses our tree canopy and the importance of our trees. And so it's, it is very important to us. And, and John is chairman of the City Tree Advisory Committee, which we are working to give him more influence and power, you know, and I don't know if power is the right word, influence in, in what goes on. So I'll read the proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and now this holiday, called Arbor Day, is celebrated nationally and throughout the world. And whereas trees are a source of beauty and renewal, and to quote J. Sterling Morton, "Other holidays repose upon the past. Arbor Day proposes for the future." And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas this is the 31st year that Paducah has been recognized as a tree city, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and we will continue to build a tree canopy for our city. Now therefore, I, George Bray, Mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, hereby proclaim April 28th, 2023, as Arbor Day. There's your folder. And it covers, of course, all of us up here, but all of the staff, all of the 330 city employees, county employees, people who dedicate their lives to public service. And I, for one, can tell you there's a lot of difference between public service and the private sector. Because I came out of the private sector and this is a lot different. And it takes, you know, a different, I don't say a different skill set, but a different understanding of what serving the public really means. And so I think this is important to proclaim, and I'll read it. It's Public Service Recognition Week. Whereas Americans are served every day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. And whereas public servants include a variety of occupations, such as administrative assistants, inspectors, computer technicians, laborers, equipment operators, engineers, truck drivers, and countless other occupations. And whereas many public servants include police officers, firefighters, and others, risk their lives each day in service to their communities. And whereas Public Service Recognition Week is an opportunity to recognize the important roles played by the various levels of government. And whereas city government is the form of government closest to most citizens with the most direct daily impact through its many services, and whereas public servants should be celebrated for their dedicated service to the community, now therefore, I, George P. Bray, Mayor of the City of Paducah, proclaim May 7th through May 13th, 2023 as Public Service Recognition Week. Congratulations.
Hey, Mayor, I'd like to make a comment on that. And that is, yesterday morning, I heard some noise outside in the street and I went out. Normally, when you've got brush piled up, there's been a whole lot of brush because a lot of bushes were killed this winter and all. So normally, they have a knuckle boom so that they come up and they pick it up and haul it off. Well, yesterday morning, there were three people from the city hauling the stuff off, putting it in the back of an old garbage truck. I asked them where the knuckle boom was, and they said, well, we've got so much stuff to do that, that the knuckle boom's too busy. We got to get out here and get it all done because it looks bad and all that. And to me, they were picking up the stuff, putting it in their physical labor, hard labor. And to me, that's just an epitome of public service. And I just, I appreciate that because I know there's a lot of work that goes on that a lot of people don't see. This work's done lots of times while people are sleeping, and I just appreciate it. Makes the city look good, and I appreciate our employees.
Great. Well said. Thank you. Okay, Mary Hammond, we have an introduction. So, welcome, Mary. It's great to, always great to have you here.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here. You know, sometimes we get caught up in our own world, and I was very glad to sit here tonight and to hear the presentation and the proclamations. I needed that. There is life outside of your own office in your own world. So I was uplifted by all of the good things happening in our community. So Quilt Week brings friends from near and far, and I'm here today to share with two friends who are here. And let's start with Secretary, Kentucky Secretary of Tourism, Arts, and Heritage, Lindy K. Speer. Lindy is no stranger to, to the arts. He has lived and breathed it for many years, and come on up.
Welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you. It's great, great to be back in Paducah. I've known Mary for many years now, very proud of what she's done. And I know that you recognize what she, her accomplishments. And I was in the Tourism, Arts, and Heritage Cabinet before, in the first Bushir administration, and when she was doing the application to become a UNESCO city. And I just know how diligent and how she worked so hard for Paducah and her pride in her city and your city, and know that that's very, that you feel that as well. It's great to be back here for the 37th Quilt Week and bring you greetings from the Governor. And the economic impact, I know you recognize that this has on the, the City of Paducah and this region, and it helps Kentucky in our overall tourism goal, which I'm proud to report that because of the investment the Governor did with 75 million of the, of the ARPA funds, that helped keep many of our tourism partners afloat during that time, during the pandemic. So, we're coming out on the other side, and we're very pleased to report that. So, happy quilt, I almost said happy Derby Week, but.
Almost.
I live in Louisville. That's, this is the other, that's the other thing going on. But this, I was very pleased to come down here and look forward to coming back when I can stay longer.
Yes.
But great to be here with you.
Well, we're very honored to have you here in our city, and we hope you have a good stay, and you're always welcome here. Of course, I know you're a busy, busy person, but we're very honored to have you here.
Well, I had to go to Ottoman Park this morning and here, and going to spend the night and have to go back tomorrow, but I will, would like to, next year, this is my first year in this gig, and next year, when I come back, I will plan, hope to come back and plan longer for Quilt Week. Because the very first time I came here, my mom grew up in Lyon County, so I'd heard of Paducah and her adventures down here as a young girl and catching a train later in her life to go to Chicago from out of Paducah. But obviously, when I saw the Four Rivers Center and just saw everything in downtown Paducah, I was like, yeah, this is not my mom's Paducah anymore. It's amazing, so.
But working hard to improve every day, so.
Well.
We thank you for your support.
That's apparent. Thank you all.
Okay.
Secretary K. Speer said, "Look at this crowd waiting to go into the awards for the American Quilter Society this evening." And I said, "Oh, hmm, this isn't a crowd. Wait till tomorrow when we go to the quilt show." So, we're excited. He will be meeting with, with the Schraders to talk about the American Quilter Society. So we're pleased with our partnership with the city, C V B, and the state. So, my next friend has not been here in eight years. He is a Duke of Paducah. But Sandro Tiberi is a master paper maker from Fabriano, Italy. Paducah and Fabriano were number six and seven in the creative cities of Craft and Folcart. We now have 59 cities in Craft and Folcart and about 250 complete cities of, in the creative city network. So Sandro is here. He has a piece at the Fantastic Fibers exhibit, and he's giving a program at Maiden Alley Cinema at 11:00 on Friday. So I would like to introduce Sandro Tiberi.
For first, I apologize so much because I only speak a little English. I hope that you can understand me.
So far, so good.
I was here eight years ago, and I feel that I'm, at my home here is a very beautiful place. And now I come for the second time because my work of art was selected for your prestigious exposition, Fantastic Fibers. This is for me is happy, happiness, and I feel honored and lucky for be here for the second time. I thank you so much for this opportunity to meet you again. And I have a little present for you, a piece of my art.
Great.
This is for you, Mary. It's a book, white book, not a book.
My wife is crazy about paper. Crazy about paper.
It's from Fabriano because I think that is beautiful to join.
Oh, she's gonna, she's gonna love this.
And this is for you. You.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And look, this is one piece of the work of art, and it's a watermark. Look.
Oh, yeah.
And you can use the light if you want, or you can put this on a wall. This is a particular techniques that they use for make my art, and I hope that you like it.
Yes.
That's, means recycled paper? Recycle, yes.
Yes, rags and recycling rags, and I create all what you have in your hands. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Please know, Mr. City Manager and City Clerk, that we will bring you some, blame it on Mary, how many we needed. So, we will bring you copies. Thank you. And I have it on a good report that the art school has some light boxes, so we need to see if we can bum one so that we can see the watermark and put it in your office. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Please come back.
Beautiful. Want to get a picture? Okay. I'm sorry, I know you've got lots on the agenda, we'll just do a real quick photo. Come on, you all. You don't need me.
How are you? Thank you. My wife is just crazy about it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Safe travels.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary. I'll be a hit when I get home. I can use all the help I can get. Okay, before we get into the meat of the agenda, I got a couple of things I just want to talk about. First of all, there's some artwork up in City Hall by a couple of artists who have recently passed away, and I just wanted to recognize them. Actually, former Mayor, Mayor Taylor pointed it out to me. First of all, Avery Krauns, who, of Krauns Corporation fame, his, his father actually started Krauns Corporation, recently passed away, and there's some pieces by Avery down in the lobby. And Avery and I actually were in kindergarten together many, many years ago, and I was very sad to see that he had passed away. And also, an African-American artist, Joan Dance, passed away just in the last week or 10 days. And she has a piece of artwork in the stairwell right down here. You can take a look at it when you go out tonight. She's been, she's been an artist, she has, had been an artist for many, many years, and has inspired a lot of, a lot of people to, to get into, into art. And so I just wanted to recognize the passing of those two folks that have certainly contributed, contributed here in City Hall.
Mayor, I've.
Yes, please.
It was my privilege to eulogize Ms. Dance on Saturday.
Okay. Yeah, she was a member of Washington Street, yeah. So, and then I want to mention, if you've followed along what's going on here, you know that a month or so ago, well, going back several months, our Planning and Zoning Commission had approved a new development out on Pecan Drive. There was some, quite a bit of concern from neighbors about various and different aspects of that, that development. And really, it, it had, it was out of the, the commission's hands because Planning and Zoning had approved it. But that piece of property has been sold, and it has been sold to a group of investors who are going to develop it differently than what it was originally proposed. And I'm told that they're going to develop fewer homes and leave more of the foliage and, and a lot of the, homes for wildlife and a lot of the, the goals that, that some of, some of the folks were concerned about when the original development was approved. So, that's, that's a transition that's just happened in the last few days, and so we welcome, we welcome that. And I think the moral of that story from my perspective is, you know, if, at some point in time, when you get to, to a point in a project where it's been, you know, it's been approved and there's nothing, there's nothing you can do about it, you can always do a transaction, you know, and make it happen in a different way. And that's what happened in this case, so. And then the last, last thing I'll mention, you know, we are moving forward with the Convention Center roof. The county approved last night at their, at their meeting to contract with an architect. You know, the city does have some direct responsibility in that project because part of the Convention Center, the older part of it, is owned by the city and not owned by the Convention Center. And so it therefore is the city's responsibility to figure out what to do with that roof. I'm speaking of the old showroom lounge, and I guess it was J. R.'s Pub or whatever. And, and the reason I'm bringing this up, this is an obligation or responsibility of the city, and the way we move forward from here is going to affect the Convention Center. So we have to, we have to carefully look at, you know, what our responsibility is there because if that part of the roof gets, gets, gets repaired, and we would not repair ours, then that would, that could be a long-term problem for the Convention Center. So, we are in the middle of that as well, as part of the Convention Center roof discussion. I do think, you know, a little bit, the moral of the story for me, with the whole discussion about the Convention Center roof is collaboration between the city and county is more important now than it's ever been. And it's something that, that the city and county will continue, continue to work very diligently at, you know, to promote and get, get better at as time goes on. Went over and spent some time with Judge Clymer yesterday, and we had a discussion about that, so we continue to work in that direction. So I'll move to the consent agenda now. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event, the, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The city clerk will read the items recommended for approval. Would any commissioner like an item removed for separate discussion?
Thank you.
And I'll ask the city clerk to please read the items recommended for approval.
Approved minutes for the April 11th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. Receive and file documents. Personnel actions. Appointment of David Guest to the Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency. This term shall expire December 31st, 2024. Appointment of John Sperlin to the Code Enforcement Board to replace Beverly McKinley, whose term has expired. This term shall expire April 25th, 2026. Reappointment of Edward Box to the Civil Service Commission. This term shall expire May 13th, 2026. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an application for Kentucky Office of Homeland Security grant in the amount of $29,130 for the purchase of a 16-foot enclosed trailer for use by the Paducah Police Department Bomb Squad, accepting any grant funds awarded and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
Still moved. Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. So the next item is a motion to ratify the execution of the settlement agreement that the four commissioners have with.
Approved minutes for the April 11, 2023 Board of Commissioners Meeting. Receive and file documents. Personnel actions. Appointment of David Guest to the Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency. This term shall expire December 31, 2024. Appointment of John Sperlin to the Code Enforcement Board to replace Beverly McKinley, whose term has expired. This term shall expire April 25, 2026. Reappointment of Edward Box to the Civil Service Commission. This term shall expire May 13, 2026. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an application for Kentucky Office of Homeland Security grant in the amount of $29,130 for the purchase of a 16-foot enclosed trailer for use by the Paducah Police Department Bomb Squad, accepting any grant funds awarded and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an application for Kentucky Office of Homeland Security grant in the amount of $28,085 for the purchase of security cameras and systems for use by the Public Works Department, Department and Parks Department, accepting any grant funds awarded and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
Still moved. Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
So the next item is a motion to ratify the execution of the settlement agreement that the four commissioners have with Commissioner Guess. There's really not much to talk about. We, I'll, I'll just say this. We've gotten, you know, a couple of, more than one open records request to take a look at our agreement. We don't have any, anything to hide about it. I mean, it's, it's, it's public record. But we thought it best to, in open session, just to, just to go ahead and vote on it. And so Commissioner Guess, if you'd just step off the dais for just a second, so that you wouldn't be part of the vote. And then I'll, I'll take a motion to ratify it.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to authorize the mayor to act as authorized representative of the city of Paducah in the execution of a settlement agreement and release of all claims between the city of Paducah, George Bray, Sandra Wilson, Ronaldo Henderson, Robert Smith and David Guess and ratifying the mayor's signature thereon.
Still moved. Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, we have one municipal order to approve tonight. And LaCica is here to talk about that. Hi, LaCica. And I guess I'll have, I'll have you read the municipal order first and then we'll let LaCica come up and explain to us.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky Administrative Plan for the 2023 Housing Choice Voucher Program effective May 1, 2023, with said administrative plan including revisions to the utility allowances for Section 8 Housing Program as required by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as revised."
Still moved.
Second.
LaCica?
Thank you guys for having us again and thank you for the pre-approval so far. Basically, what we do here for the City of Paducah Section 8 Office is we help families who are low to moderate income find decent, safe and affordable housing. We recently updated our administrative plan for our utility schedule and our fair market rents. These are standard updates that occur every year. And so with the city's approval, we just request that they oversee what we're doing with our program until HUD changes what we're doing. As we were here in the City Hall, we have now moved over to the Housing Authority of Paducah. And we've been there since 2018. Recently, we just had a HUD audit. And some of you probably have received documentation from us for approvals. A lot of things are changing over at the Housing Authority. We recently lost our executive director. And then as of next week or end of this month, I'm sorry, we're going to lose our finance director. So we have a lot of changes and a lot of updates that are going to occur. So you'll hear from me requesting maybe some other consents and some municipal orders to take place in the near future. Right now, Section 8 families are assisted with funding from HUD, which is the Housing and Urban Development. And we are assisting 363 families at this time with right at about $161,000 a month. Not a lot of money, but it's a lot of money when there's the families that we assist need the assistance. We're sort of a second nature to community services. And we've actually talked about that all night. And I was so engaged in what the, the speakers were saying about how they assist, not only in the community, but how we're making a service for our families throughout the state and throughout the nation. Because HUD is a universal program with funding for any families, anywhere, that qualify based on their income. Some other things that we are still trying to work toward is homeownership. I have been a part of the Steering Committee. I've missed a couple of meetings because we have been super busy with things that are going on in the community. But we are still trying to make partnership and increase homeownership and housing for all families across Kentucky, not just in Paducah area, since this is a universal program across the state or the United States. Other things that we are trying to do with the Section 8 program is to encourage new development and also landlord participation. Without new development, we cannot house families beyond what we already have. So when we're in place with housing, if we don't have any new development coming through our area, we cannot house additional families. And one thing I can say is that we have had some interest in new development. One of the programs is the Dunlop, where the old Jettan Schoolhouse is. I had the privilege of actually touring that new development. It's old, but it's still new to us. And so I believe they're going to have at least 40 units when they complete the project. And that's going to help assist with housing, whether people are looking for a new place to live or if they're homeless, this housing is available. That's the, the newest development that we have information about. We do have some landlords that are interested in purchasing homes and actually building a couple of homes on Cruz Avenue. I think that's going to be a development there. So we, we are moving forward in the direction that we need to go in as far as completing some projects for families that are here and around the community. So we wish that you would approve this for us so we can move forward.
So LaCica, before you run off, a couple of things. So I think what, what you do is really important in the community because there's a lot of people that do need, you know, help. And everybody's entitled to, you know, decent housing, you know. And so, you know, I think it's really important. You know, one of the things from the city standpoint, you know, HUD is, you know, we don't have any really responsibility over that. Yet everything that the Housing Authority and you do reflects on the city. So it's very important that, you know, we work in, in conjunction and we support you any way that we can. And if there's, you know, some, some help you need from us, you, you can come to us and see what we can do. And we have to have arms length, but at the same time, you know, we're intertwined.
Absolutely. You guys have been a great support. There's never been a moment that we haven't reached out to our networking agencies or entities or organizations that we haven't got the services that we need. So that's important to us as well because you have to have the backing to be able to support things moving forward. And everything that I've touched as far as the program requirements and all the collaborators that are involved has had a, a great impact on how we move forward. So thank you guys for always being available. We've always had a good communication connection and we hope to continue to strive and to move forward with housing.
Well, thank you for being here tonight and thank you for all that you do.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Call roll.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
So we have one ordinance to adopt tonight. And it has to do with pickleball. And would you read it, please?
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement with Precision Construction and Contracting LLC, ECC Sports," in an amount of $701,967 for the construction of pickleball courts at Noble Park and amending ordinance number 2022-06-8740, entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for the Fiscal Year July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government." This ordinance accepts the bid of PCC Sports for the construction of eight pickleball courts at Noble Park using post-tensioned concrete and including electrical and lighting in the amount of $701,967 and authorizes the mayor to execute the agreement with PCC Sports. Further, this annual, the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022 and ending June 30, 2023, as adopted by ordinance number 2022-06-8740, is amended by the following appropriations to transfer $350,000 from the investment fund fund balance to the pickleball project account PAO125.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Any questions about this? You know, if we would not pass this, we might have a problem.
I get it.
We've been talking about this for a couple of years. And I actually sat down and watched pickleball this weekend on ESPN for the first time. And, you know, so it's, the, the growth of the sport's amazing. And I know this is going to be well-received. And I know, I look around, cities everywhere are building pickleball courts. So onward and upward. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye. Play ball or whatever you say.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
There were a lot of gasp at home.
Oh, that was funny. That was funny. Okay, we have three ordinances to introduce tonight. So the first one, I'll ask our City Clerk to please read and then Rick Murphy will come up and explain to us.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for the Closing of 4,356 Square Feet of Monroe Street Between 200 and 306 North Second Street and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute All Documents Related to Same." This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah does hereby authorize the closing of 4,356 square feet of Monroe Street between 200 and 306 North Second Street and authorizes and powers directs the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed from the city of Paducah to the property owner and or abutting the public way to be closed.
Still moved. Second.
Mayor Commission, City Manager, City Clerk, this is actually, comes as a surprise to me because our plat books that are very old for the city of Paducah, Lyndsay, you bring that up? Yeah, okay. Showed that this street was closed. And it's a portion down, down by the farmer's market. And actually, yeah, right here, there's a, is that me or is that you?
That's you.
That's me. Wow, it's sensitive. Anyway, you can see this area right here, that's Old Monroe Street. I'll see if I can do it this way better. That's Old Monroe Street right there, going through there. But it actually was closed several years ago. But there's a little portion that is right over here next to Second Street that was left unclosed. And the property owner was having that surveyed and discovered that and brought that to our, my office's attention. And I'm like going, well, it says it was closed, but this portion wasn't. So we're just doing some cleanup work here so that there won't be a little piece of public right-of-way going in towards the farmer's market that that'll just be one continuous piece of property. Sorry, this mouse is a little bit sensitive. So that's what that first one's about.
Okay. City Clerk, would you read the second one, please?
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Acceptance of Maintenance Responsibilities for Certain Streets from the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet to the city of Paducah and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute All Documents Related to Same." This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah hereby authorizes the acceptance of maintenance responsibility for certain streets from the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet as follows. Kentucky Avenue from Third Street to South Water Street. Water Street from Kentucky Avenue to Broadway. And Broadway from Water Street to Third Street and authorizes the mayor to execute any and all documents relating to the aforementioned transfer.
Still moved.
Second.
You may be asking yourself a question. Why are we transferring maintenance from the state back to the city on these? You'll recall several years ago in the early 2000s, we had a project called Streetscape. And one of the conditions of that is that the, the street that we would be improving would be within one block of a state route. So we had a little situation there that we worked with our, our state KYTC officials. And we, actually what happened was the Highway Department actually took over Broadway from Third Street to Water, from, and Water Street and Kentucky Avenue back to Third Street. And that has created some problems for us because of identification of permitting and some of those things. We have been actually maintaining those streets over the years. But it just, just recently, we were having a development and there was a permit confusion about where did we get the permit from. So some folks were down there making some improvements on Kentucky Avenue, renovation of a building to put in a fire sprinkler system. And they didn't know where to get the permits. And I'm like, I know what's going on, we'll fix this. So I worked with Kyle Poe and both, he being the district engineer said, yeah, we need to reverse that and put that back in city maintenance. And it's, that's where it should be because that's what, that's what we take care of.
Any questions for anybody? Okay, great. Thanks for being here, Rick. Appreciate it. And the last ordinance that we're going to introduce, we're going to let City Manager Jordan explain to us. But first I'll ask our City Clerk to please read it.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing an Energy Project Assessment District, EPAD, Program Pursuant to KRS 65.205 to 65.209, to Advance the Conservation and Efficient Use of Energy and Water Resources Within the City of Paducah, Kentucky, by Allowing for Energy Projects to Be Financed by Assessments Imposed Upon the Real Property Being Improved Through the Energy Projects." Providing the terms and conditions of the program stating the intention that assessments will be utilized to support private sector energy projects, designating the EPAD and its boundaries, providing for the administration of the EPAD program, determining the procedure by which owners of real property may petition the city for participation in the program, designating the Finance Department as the collector of the assessment and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all agreements and other documents for the implementation and administration of the program. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance establishes an Energy Project Assessment District, EPAD, program to advance the conservation and efficient use of energy and water resources in the city of Paducah, defines the boundary of said district and outlines the program terms, administration and procedure by which property owners may petition for participation. Further, this ordinance designates the Finance Department as the collector and authorizes the execution of any agreement for the implementation and administration of the program.
Still moved.
Second.
So City Manager has told us about this project before. It's a little complex, kind of hard to understand, so we'll dig in again tonight.
Mayor Commission, thank you. As Mayor, as you mentioned, you know, we brought this before you several meetings ago to begin the dialogue. You know, on its basis, while there is a lot of parts to this, on its basis, it's just another tool in the toolbox for economic development. It does not obligate the city in any way to be responsible for anything. And it's not a compulsory program. It's totally volunteer. And so this is the first step of enacting the ordinance to allow us to then proceed after adoption to establishing the program to where anybody that wanted to participate could make an application for participation. In doing so, it allows that entity to offset their costs by getting some financing through local lenders or lenders of their choice that have been established in the program. That also allows them to offset that lending capacity and not be, gives them a little bit more borrowing capacity, I'm sorry, not lending capacity on that. Again, it's not a compulsory program. There's, you know, if nobody wants to participate, nobody participates. It is just another tool in the toolbox. The county did adopt similar legislation a little over a year ago. But when they adopted it, they adopted it in the unincorporated areas. And so we have had, at least in my short tenure, I know of, of two inquiries about us having this program. There, I think there's a few more out there. We heard about housing and things like that. And it is for energy efficiency type programs. And so I think that once we have this adopted, we'll see some more, some more interest in the program.
And do you have any literature on that?
Beyond what I shared with the Commission electronically several weeks ago. That was the literature.
What was that? Two months ago?
Hmm, it's, it's been, no, it's been.
Can you just reshare?
I'll just reshare, yeah.
Okay.
It, it gave a, a quick overview of the program and gave how, you know, the different processes and how it goes through.
Essentially, the way I understand it, you know, these big projects, the bigger the project, the more the need is, you know, where they're, you know, trying to maximize their borrowing capacity. And a bank's looking at, you know, their, their statements. And if they can, it's basically taking it off-balance sheet. It's, it's, I, I compare it to off-balance sheet financing, you know, where it doesn't affect the ratios and, and their relationship with their lender.
And again, in, in the Commonwealth, it was set up and established, this is a program that's across the country. But in the Commonwealth, it was established specifically for energy efficiency type projects. efficiency type projects. Or that component of a project.
So, we got some discussion items for tonight, all of which are important. The first one being an update from our Director of Planning, Nick Hutchinson, on the City Block project. And I'll just preface Nick's remarks by saying that, you know, the fences are up, people see stuff going on downtown, they don't know what the heck's going on. And so, when's the hotel going to be open? What are we doing? You know, how's it going? So, I think this is something that we owe the community to try to keep people updated on where we are. So, Nick, it's your show. If you can get your PowerPoint going.
We hit escape.
So, try it again?
Yeah, try it one more time. Under View.
We'll just do it from this. Good evening, Mayor Commission, City Manager, City Clerk. We're excited to provide an update on the City Block project. As the mayor mentioned, there's a lot of people who are interested in hearing about the progress of the project. I get a call usually weekly asking if the project is canceled because maybe there isn't construction equipment down there that day or that hour. So, it's continually informing the public of the status of the project and, you know, the progress as we move forward. Just a couple of key points for maybe the community that isn't aware of the project. So, City Block is divided into two key phases. Phase one is the construction of the Boutique Hotel. The contract, the developer on the project is Wayland Ventures. And this will be an 81-room boutique hotel with two restaurant concepts, two retail spaces on the ground floor, and a rooftop bar. The other portion of the first phase is the public facilities. This is where the city is contributing to the project. So, this is redevelopment of that public space. Once completed, we will have 175 parking spaces, additional ADA parking capabilities, and improvements to the Streetscape on the entire block and parking lot improvements. If at any point you have questions, feel free to stop me. Just a general overview of the site itself. So, this initial phase of construction, phase one, is the hotel, which is going on the north side of the site. That's where the hotel mixed-use development will be. And then, the public facilities is the remainder of the site that's currently closed. The phase two is what's indicated here as a future phase for a future three-story residential. Wayland has announced that Bossy Construction will be the general contractor for the hotel. Ray Black and Sons is the contractor for the public facilities. That contract is being managed by Wayland Design Build Partners LLC, Corporation of Wayland.
And they're out of Evansville, right? Bossy?
Just to give a overview of the site, so this is the portion of the site that's been closed. We broke ground on January 27th of this year. We closed the site shortly after and began doing some demolition and excavation work. So, I've indicated here the hotel site to give you a general idea of where that footprint will be. And then, the public facilities will be this remaining portion of the enclosed site. Thanks to Paducah Drone with his permission, he allowed me to share these photos. These were taken back in March when excavation work had started on the site. Since, you know, the initial groundbreaking, 4,300 tons have been removed from the site. About 85% of those tons required elevated disposal with waste pass. So, really excited to get past this initial phase. During this excavation process, we did run into some existing footing foundation from previous structures that were once on the site. This was anticipated. We've had engineers look at those existing footings and foundations. There's no additional work that needs to be done. They can remain in place. So, now we are getting towards the end of April. With the site work and preparation mostly completed, we are going to be starting on the underground utilities, getting the entire site served. So, that will probably, that'll be kind of our next phase. And then, probably end of May, we'll start working on stormwater and some other subgrade improvements. Once all of those subgrade features are completed, we will start to see concrete work and asphalt for the new parking lot. So, starting in June, hotel foundations will begin. They are going to do a auger-casp pile system for the foundation. This is comparable to what was done with the Holiday Inn and the Carson Center. So, those will go in starting in June. And then, starting in July, again, asphalt and kind of the finishing completion for the parking lot will be done. The goal is for the parking lot, public facilities to be completed in advance of barbecue on the river. So, that's kind of what Chris has indicated to me. Again, construction schedules can change quickly, but overall, that's kind of our general goal, is to get that parking lot back open as soon as possible. In terms of the hotel, we'll start to see the vertical construction late summer, early fall of this year. Hotel will be complete in the fall of 2024. And then, they're planning to have a grand opening in spring of 2025. The reason why there is that gap between the 2024 and 2025 is that's just going to be for them to get the interior finishes in and get hotel staff trained, get the facility completed. So, again, this could shift multiple directions at this point, but just to give the community a general timeframe, this is where we are at. This is a elevation of the hotel. If you were standing at the flood wall opening currently today and looking west into the site, this is what you will see. Again, that ground floor will have an outdoor seating area with a restaurant concept and then that third floor or fourth floor there will have a three-season rooftop bar and then a four-season kind of interior room that the windows can open and, you know, be used all year round. Phase two, mixed-use facility, based on the development agreement, it's a 54,000-square-foot mixed-use development predominantly commercial on the ground floor with residential above. And, you know, the overall design and aesthetics will be complementary to the hotel project and will be compliant with the downtown design standards. So, we are looking to do a property transfer of that track three to Wayland in January of 2024. They will initiate construction on that mixed-use development April of 2024. And then, the project will be completed by October of 2025. So, it'll be shortly after completion of the hotel, but not too long after. Any questions?
Yeah, just got a couple. I know these details worked out before, so I'm just, for my own information. The parking is 175 lots and that's our parking. I mean, we're paying for it, but it's also used by the public and the hotel?
Correct.
Is there any controls, like so many spaces are going to be devoted for the hotel or just to first come, first served kind of a deal?
It is all public parking.
All right, cool. Thank you.
There, in the development agreement, you know, city has priority and preference of the parking spaces for public purposes. If we do close off the site, we do have to notify the adjacent, you know, property owners of that site closure, but, you know, that's a common courtesy.
So, we wouldn't, I mean, we would avoid that, I'm sure. But if there's some sort of festival or whatever, we would have the option to close it off for our use.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? So, I just want to address one thing. I think one of the things people have been asking, go back to the, maybe one of the early slides where it depicted the three different spaces. Maybe one more. Well, yeah, okay. So, you see the yellow up there, that's the hotel. And you see the middle is, that's the public parking that Ray Black and Sons is working on now.
Correct.
And if you recall, you know, the, the spot down closest to Broadway is where the parking is open now. And so, the question is, what's going to happen to that? And the answer is, it's going to remain as it is. So, when the parking lot, the, the public parking is completed, until the project begins, you know, with the phase three development on that building, then it will remain as it is today.
Only until the construction starts.
Only until the construction starts.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, the previous parking lot was oriented in a north-south. We have shifted that orientation of the parking aisles. And so, you know, the perimeter fence is currently right here. Once this is completed, we'll have a transition so that these two will work together.
I see.
Until construction begins on phase two.
I just, I just wanted to, you know, make that comment for the sake of the public who are just wondering about everything, you know, what's going to happen, what timeframe and that sort of thing, so.
And we don't have a location determined for the gazebo yet, but that is a part of ongoing conversation. So, that's the second call that I get weekly is, can I have the gazebo? So.
Yeah. So, a lot of interest in the project, but it's moving along. And again, as I've stated before, you know, we've got Ray Black and Sons doing that, the public parking spot and it gives me a lot of confidence there. They've got our best interests at heart, so I get, I get a lot of, you know, great information from, from Chris about what's going on. So, I really think we got a good partnership there, so.
Absolutely.
Everybody good?
Good.
Okay. Thanks very much, Nick, for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, the next discussion item is relative to, it's kind of a double discussion about Human Rights Commission and a Diversity Specialist discussion. You want to set it up for me?
Yeah, well, I actually have Stephanie come up.
Stephanie, you ready to?
To the podium. But as she's walking up, you know, as part of the Commission's priorities, you talked about equity and inclusion. And we began the conversation around that of how best to, to meet that priority and serve the community and serve our organization. And so, Stephanie has worked real diligently in helping us get to, to something that I'm excited about, your discussion tonight here. And so, Stephanie, I'll turn it over to you.
I was in the, under the understanding this is a joint conversation?
Yes.
So, I'm prepared for half of it.
I was trying to loop him in, you know.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager, City Clerk. We are very excited to talk about adding a position into the Human Resources Office. It's still, the title is still up for discussion as well, but currently is labeled as a Diversity Specialist. And what this position would do is work on our internal efforts when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion. I am happy to announce that our survey went out yesterday. So, a lot of what this position would do, if allowed to move forward with, is look at the results and develop a plan for us moving forward, looking at our policies, looking at our pay equity, looking at our recruitment efforts, how we can develop a more diverse workforce, and just also the training programs that we can provide internally. They will also have an external piece, which is working with the Human Rights Commission. I believe currently that board is not populated, so that would be another effort involved is selecting members for that board that this person would work with to look at those complaints that would come to or, maybe not complaints, but issues that would arise around human rights. They would help assist filing those with the appropriate organization. Or if it's a matter that we would handle internally, they would help with that process. Other, other items, again, recruitment, policies related to DE and I efforts, things of those nature.
And so, Mayor Commission, as Stephanie mentioned, you know, the, the first aspect of, you know, the discussion tonight is, you know, staff's recommendation to be able to create that Diversity Specialist discussion, that discussion around that creation of that. We, if allowed to move forward, if that's the pleasure of this Commission with that, the, the pay range would be comparable to what others are recruiting for in the current, our current market. So, a grade 10 is where we are looking at and the midpoint is around the same midpoint of what I think WKCTC is, is actually advertising right now for, for a similar position.
Correct. They are, they are advertising for a Diversity Director position that is in the mid-range of 55,000 and this mid-range would be around 57,000.
Was the job description packet? Okay, okay. Has the Commissioners all seen the job description?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right.
I have two copies here.
Okay. Well, maybe you could just share it with them, you know, electronically, so, so they've got a good.
Stephanie highlighted the, you know, the, the primary functions of, as we envision this, this opportunity to become, add a new team member with that and as both external and internal efforts around these efforts.
So, we've had here in the city, this kind of dovetails in with the whole Human Rights Commission. We have an ordinance on the books that says that we have a Human Rights Commission. And when I was first elected, we were kind of coming out of a, a period of time when I think we made the determination we wanted to maybe change the direction and the focus and figure out exactly how the best way to move forward was. So, we've taken a little time to make that decision. And so, we're in the process of populating, we'll be in the process of populating that Board of Directors with the goal of starting it up by the 1st of July. So, the recruitment and the hiring of a Diversity Specialist, you know, we're really dovetail into that. So, we're going to coordinate those, those two activities. And that person, you know, would, as been, as been described, you know, would interface with the Human Rights Commission as well as other, I mean, we saw this presentation tonight from the students at Paducah Tillman. You know, there's other organizations out there in the community, you know, that they can interface with. Other companies, some have Diversity Specialists or Diversity Folks and so, you know, interfacing, looking at best practices, you know, that sort of thing. One of the things that we've said, one of our goals was, when it comes to diversity, equity, inclusion, we said the city wanted to lead in that discussion and so, this is, you know, this is one of the ways that we lead. lead, you know, by hiring somebody who's focused on it, and also by repopulating our Human Rights Commission, and then coordinating those two activities. So.
I think it's, I think it's two great moves for us as a city. I think we can't really talk about the whole issue of diversity and equity and inclusion seriously, I think, without having someone whose main focus is that. And that, that person helps us stay focused, you know, so it just doesn't become a buzzword. But it's something that we are intentional in doing, intentional in making happen, and every organization and/or city ought to have the same thing. So I think it's a good rate. And of course, I, I trust that our Human Rights Commission, which has not been operative for quite some time, would have the necessary training and all of the things that go with that, so that they can be effective, collaborative, working, putting us all on the same page.
Yeah, that's gonna be some hard work, you know, figuring out exactly what their role's gonna be, you know, and, and how they interface with the state, you know, which has responsibility to hear certain cases. And, you know, it's always been kind of the conundrum or the dilemma, you know, is how to figure that out. But we will, we'll figure it out.
And of course, we know that, that the whole human rights is not just about race. It's about discrimination across the board. And so our citizens need to know that if they have felt that they have been discriminated against in any way, that they do have somewhere that they can go, they can talk, and be guided in the right direction. And we haven't had that for quite some time.
When do you anticipate filling that board?
Um, between now and July 1.
Yeah, our, our anticipation would be, if, if you authorize us to move forward, was, is to target having the specialist onboard by the start of the fiscal year or as close to that. And so, and also in anticipation through the budget process, we've been allocating, or, you know, and as we work through the budget, put dollars in for the training and education that will be needed for both the board and for the specialist.
I'm just real, I'm in, real interested in seeing how it's supposed to work, together, the plan and the job description for the diversity specialist, just kind of getting a global view of what we're working on.
Right.
So that'd be good.
So I think the next step is, if the, if the Commissioners are comfortable in moving forward, you know, is to hear a motion to authorize the beginning of the recruitment of this diversity specialist. And so, is there a potential motion, or is there?
Yeah. Do you want me to?
Just a proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to authorize the City Manager to begin recruiting for the diversity specialist position.
So I'm moved.
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Stephanie.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a discussion on the dog park. And wow. So I don't want to go through it all. I mean, we're, we're gonna be moving the dog park.
Briefly.
Amy's got two.
We're gonna be moving the dog park.
I don't think I'll slate Amy, give her my time.
So, Commissioner, you know, you'll recall that you had approved the, the location of the dog park from, as part of the ILA, you know, from Stuart Nelson over to Noble. And we showed you an area a couple meetings ago. In further review of that area, there's been, we, we showed you an option where the small and large dog park maintained connectivity close and around the Anna Bomber Pavilion.
There we go.
And that's what, you know, we kind of outlined for you. And then staff and, and working with Jeff Cantor and his team, you know, went back out and looked. And so also, you know, Amy, you want to show the second?
Yes.
Option that we've discussed. And so I'll let you talk about that, Amy.
Yeah, so when we started talking with the design team and working out the layout, the concept that we originally showed you was this option one, where both parks are on, on the nature trail side of the Anna Bomber building. But when we started working the layout, it, it really took up more space than we realized it was going to. And in order to get it, to get it to be like-for-like with the square footage, we wanted to bring this back to you to allow you to see what the impact would be. So this is the site as we proposed the last time on the Anna Bomber building side. The larger portion there is the large dog park. It runs from just north of the Anna Bomber building to the shelter area on the south side of that site. And then the dog, or the small dog park would be farther north between the Anna Bomber building and where the storm, the pump station is. And so we wanted to just bring this back to you to allow you to see what that square footage actually looks like on the site. And then as a second proposal, if we didn't want to do that, the team recommended potentially moving the small dog park to the other side, on the flood levy side, allowing more space to spread out, and then still allowing maybe the Anna Bomber to be potentially rented in the future, giving us that green space back. So we wanted to bring this back to you just to give you the option to provide input, see which direction you wanted to go. And then pending approval, we would be looking for authorization to put out an RFP for proposals on the construction once design is complete.
And I know that Commissioner Smith had inquired when we sent that, that out to you about why we looked at the small dog park to the upside and the larger. And that has to do with the encroachment of the roadway that, that comes in from the top side there. And so keeping the smaller park allowed us to facilitate traffic flow and increase that there. So you have more than just one way in and one way out.
Right. So this roadway right here would be new. This allows us to come in on the basketball court, court side. That way, if there's anything that closes the park, any kind of event, the dog park is still accessible.
Yeah.
I really like this. One reason, it keeps the building open for rentals, which sounded like we did use it quite a bit. And I just hated limiting it where it couldn't be used for family events anymore. But it still provides restrooms for the dog park and some other things. So, I mean, I think this is a good location, good layout.
So I, I have a question. The difference in, so the small dog park, does that mean it's for smaller dogs?
Correct. I think the limit right now is 35 pounds and less. And then, of course, dog owners that have multiple dogs, different sizes, a lot of them choose to use the larger dog park for both of their dogs. But typically, 35 pounds and less is who uses the small dog park.
So you're gonna be policing that?
No. No, it's just a guide. It's a guideline.
Well, that's the way it is now, anyway. So they're used to it.
And, and really, our dog park users are really good at policing themselves for the most part. And so, yeah, we don't, we don't, I don't get that complaint very often.
No, I like, I like, I agree with Commissioner Wilson. I like the separation of the two myself. I, I think people be real positive about that.
And there are utilities on that side. And so there's, you know, access for the, for, you know, water and things like that. So we wouldn't have, you know, the added cost in addition.
That's all there.
Yeah, it's about right here is where the water connection is, where that old ballfield was. And so it's, it's within distance, for sure.
I see there's a motion in our ballot.
Yeah, one, one other thing before we do that. So Amy and I had an email discussion about sponsorships, you know, I mean, since the last time that we built a dog park, I mean, you know, the, the dog business, if you will, you know, has really grown. And there's probably a lot, a lot of opportunity, you know, to get some folks in the community, whether it be, you know, vets or kennels, or, you know, places like PetSmart that want their name associated or want to contribute. And we have to think through it. But I think there may be an opportunity to really spruce up, I mean, you know, add some, some value to the dog park.
Add some amenities.
Uh huh. So, okay. So any other discussion about the location of where it is? Are we okay with the separation of the two?
And so that would be option two.
Would you like to read that motion?
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to select Anna Bomber Site Option Number Two for the creation of dog parks at Noble Park and authorize the City Manager to issue a request for bids for the construction of a small dog enclosure and a large dog enclosure to be located at said site in Noble Park.
So I'm moved?
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
Okay.
Thank you.
This has been a workin' meeting. Any comments from the City Manager?
Just one, Mayor, the Mayor and Commissioner, and Commissioner Smith, you, you recognized and thank for doing so, some of our team members. The Mayor and I also received an email from, from Paducah Power and their work when we had the Spring Cleanup Day. And they called out a couple of our team members that, that helped with that and their professionalism and their willingness to do that. And so, you know, of our, you know, all of our team continuously, you know, rises to the level that, in the expectation of being public servants with servant hearts. And so we always want to recognize that. And I'm appreciative of all of our team members.
Great, thank you. Comments from Commissioners?
None.
Okay, we have one.
Welcome to the Quilters.
I'm sorry?
I was gonna say, welcome to the Quilters. We're about to be invaded, and it's awesome to see it.
Yeah, that's right. Well, I've been, I've been in the middle of it all day, so, along with our City Clerk and our City Manager, so. But we're, I got a, I got a message this afternoon that we're onward and upward, so.
Good.
We do have one public comment, Thomas Fairhurst. So we welcome you, Mr. Fairhurst. I do, I'm gonna read sort of our, our, our statement about comments. We welcome you, first of all. And we invite the, the public to make comments. It's very important to the commission that we hear from people, good, bad, or indifferent. So I would just point out that as the presiding officer, I, I can moderate, allow, or disallow these comments. And we certainly make it available for everybody. Speakers must maintain a decorum and respectfulness to the elected officials and others in attendance when addressing our Commissioners. No elected official or staff member may be targeted individually. And I'll halt comments if that happens, if there's any disrespect. The City Commission is under no obligation to respond to public comments. And comments will be limited, limited to three minutes per person, unless extended by the presiding officer myself. And with that, I'll let you, you got handouts?
With your permission?
Yes, sir.
I apologize. I brought them, and I don't think I brought enough for everybody. I'm just, if you don't mind, please.
Thank you.
I do have additional. If you will, please allow me. I do appreciate your time today.
Just before you start your comments and before we start the time, would you mind, for the record, to state your name and your address?
My name is Thomas Fairhurst. I reside at 409 Flora Avenue, which is my residence and place of business.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I will, if you don't mind, pass around these notices, because I will be referring to those. Ladies and gentlemen, please know that I'm here today to discuss with you my current residence and place of business, 409 Flora Avenue, and the citations of the City Inspector, Mr. David Jones. Please find attached pictures I have referenced below. In 2005, I opened RCS, Reliable Computer Solutions, and have been the premier computer repair facility ever since. Most computer repair companies in Paducah folded over the last three years. Only corporate stores like Best Buy and Office Depot are left for as-needed computer repair services in this town. More on this later. Over the last month, I have experienced, I have had an experience that has changed my mind by continuing to live in the city of Paducah. I have attached a picture of my home at 409 Flora Avenue from Google Maps that was taken a few months ago at the beginning of winter 2023. You will see orange traffic cones left by Atmos Energy after they repaired a faulty gas line leading to my home, a wheelbarrow, and two appliances. I was waiting for the annual Paducah Cleanup Day, which was referenced earlier, on Saturday, April 15th, to remove those from my property. On or around March 16th, Paducah had a windstorm exceeding 24 miles an hour. At that time, I had a tent top in my backyard covering my gardening supplies that was damaged and torn, so it needed to be replaced. But there were no replacements available at the local store, and they were out of stock online, awaiting a shipment. On or about Thursday, March 30th, 2023, I received two notices on my door for violations that must be remedied in seven days or less. One violation for rubbish and debris, the second notice for shed, no foof. I overlooked the obvious misspelling, and with help, got the tent back up. With "help." I need to explain that. In August of 2021, I took a second shot of the Moderna COVID-19 vaccine. I have never had COVID. I repeat, I have never had COVID. This was done so I could continue to service local government, retirement, and healthcare facilities that required this vaccination. Four days later, I could not walk. I now take 13 medications five times a day so that I can walk. I take my time now to do manual labor. I need more time to do it in shorter sessions. I now need help getting heavy work done to ensure my safety. Now that I had the tent back up and batten down, the day after getting the notice, we had another 25 mile an hour windstorm. That night, it tore the tent top off completely, rendering it unusable. I had only five days left to fix this issue. So I went to, I went and spent over $800 at Lowe's getting roof supplies to make sure I had a roof to be in compliance with Paducah City Code of Ordinances, Section 42-46. The last day to be compliant was upon us, and I was getting the last parts of the new roof completed with assistance, and the mail was delivered. I then received the correction notice. The correction notice referenced the exact same day and time of the original violation to fix the foof, and the violation was as follows. 302.7 accessory statutes. All accessory structures, including detached garages, fence, and walls, shall be maintained structurally sound and in good repair.
Mr. Fairhurst, we're, we're, we're coming to the end, you know, the, the little bell went off, so you, but let me just.
If you don't mind, please, I will just finish up in another 30 seconds.
Finish up, please, yes, sir.
Okay. I got the notice. I contacted Mr. David Jones and asked what needed to be approved, to done, to approve the structure. Mr. Jones said it was not compliant with Building Code Structures and needed to be torn down. I asked if it could be fixed, and was told the Building Inspector would tell me what needed to be done to tear it down. In short, the Building Inspector looked over the tent and shed and said that the roof joists may need to be rotated and maybe another row. Otherwise, he was satisfied. Mr. Jones then asked multiple times to have different issues looked at by the inspector, and he told them that they were all within code or not issues. Mr. Jones then decided to walk around my property, and he's pointed out every stick, stone, and tarp on my property. I was then told that I will be inspected every six months from now on. Six months? Wait a minute. I thought it only had seven days. No, every 60 days. Not only did Mr. Jones not put the 60 days on the notice that he was supposed to?
Sir, I got your point. I got your point.
Well, this is the point that I am trying to make in the very end. I am now looking at other options. I am very much looking outside the city of Paducah because of this issue. I would very much appreciate it if you consider my comments.
I will.
Thank you.
So I'm just gonna, I am gonna respond, not necessarily directly to your comments, but just in general. So I have, I intended, I attended our last Code Enforcement Board meeting. And, you know, it's, it's and, you know, it's, it's a real challenge, what we try to do in the city, you know, to make sure that we keep the city and neighborhoods looking, looking clean and consistent. We try to balance that with our residents' ability to, to do those things. It's, it's not easy. I will look into your particular situation personally and, and follow up with you.
Well, I do make continual improvements to that property. One of the other points that I would like to make out, sir, is that my property is worth almost one-third more than anybody else in the area because of what I do to my property and the way that I maintain it. It is under constant renovation. So, this being told that I will be checked on every 60 days from now on is a little bit concerning.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
Here are these back if you want, if you want these back.
Please, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for being here, sir. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, who?
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.